I'm Steve Engel, the chancellor. Dr. Richard Brown and I are going to tag-team this presentation a little bit. He's going to do some of the budget stuff. I'm going to cover some of the introductory comments. And in terms of where we are, we've had a budget process. And from each unit forward, trying to get priorities out, I think we ended up with about $8 million in requests. We may have put a slide in about this because we didn't have, but that there's more requests than there are money. There is money, so that's just the way it is. We always have to make decisions. We have tried to involve people. We've been engaging the University Planning and Resource Allocation Committee, this UPAC, University Planning and Resource Advisory Committee. And to try to make sure that we have collaborative efforts within academic affairs, the deans have sat down with the provost and collectively looked at decision-making processes, trying to set priorities. We've done that for the campus with the vice chancellors. So at each stage, we've tried to do this and then have a meeting with our UPAC committee to then engage them. So at the end of this presentation, we'll give you a chance to ask some questions. There are mics down here so that people can be heard if you'd like, and we will respond. So there are some things moving forward. There's some really good news in the budget this year in terms of higher education is getting quite a bit. The formula, we're at the top of the state in terms of the outcomes-based funding formula. So we're going to get some money. You'll look at how much that is. Higher education, you know, fully funding that formula makes a big difference to us, and it's fully funded. Deferred maintenance, there's money in the budget for that. Higher education is doing pretty well. We can always do better. You know, there's the state portion, about 55% of a 3% salary increase for staff in there. We have to come up with the rest. But there are also some restrictions in terms of the budget advisory group that the president had. One of the guidelines was that the tuition increases would not be beyond what we have for the higher education inflation index. That is nationally 1.8% this year. And so our budget is put together around a tuition increase of 1.8%, which is certainly a very low tuition increase. We have been talking about charging for 15 credit hours to help students finish in four years. We've called that 15 and 4. It's a model that UT Knoxville instituted about three years ago, started this past fall at, under a modified scenario, at UT Martin. So it's really great to incentivize students to finish in four years, but the way this does it is if you take 12, 13, or 14 credit hours, you're paying for 15. So what are the implications on our undergraduate student enrollment? Will we lose students because we're too expensive? We're looking at this. We've talked with students. We've had some forums. We don't have any decision yet of what we're taking forward even to the Board of Trustees. It's likely that this would be a Fall of 2019 initiative and would only impact the new students who were recruited under a set of expectations to pay that in tuition. And that everyone else prior to that, if you finish in four years, would be grandfathered. So 15 and 4 is something that you'll hear more about. It'll be under discussion, but it's not a part of our base budget. It's not a part of any of the budget planning. It's not a part of the revenue that we're proposing at all. It's an item we're going to be discussing and talking about. Affordability is a big deal for us, and we are an access institution, even though we're fairly selective with a 3.5 average GPA for incoming freshmen. We recruit really good students. We're looking at out-of-state tuition at $24,000 to $27,000. Are we turning away too many students who don't even think about coming here because we don't fit in the marketplace? UT Martin made that decision recently. That's something we're looking at. We recently expanded our junior, senior, beyond 60 credit hours. If you live in North Georgia or Alabama, seven bordering counties, you could pay in-state rate plus a 25% surcharge. So out-of-state rate is $24,000 roughly. For undergraduates, you would pay $12,000. In-state students pay about $8,000. So you still pay a premium, but you don't pay $24,000. That was only for juniors and seniors after you have 60 credit hours. We got approval from the Board of Trustees this past meeting here in Chattanooga to expand that to freshmen and sophomores so that we can go and recruit students directly from those high schools in those counties and get them to come here. We had about 100 freshmen and sophomores and 350 juniors and seniors. Probably not a surprise. It's really expensive for freshmen and sophomores. It's affordable for juniors and seniors. We think we'll make up for that in our increased revenue by getting about 200. If we get 150 students, increase in 50, we paid for this program, and everything else beyond that is additional revenue. The specialized fees, as we add in course fees, what does it mean for parking? Parking proposed increase for students is 1.8% because that's what we're doing on tuition. I think the only thing that isn't that is a already negotiated increase with Airmark, which is 4% in their food service meal plans. You'll hear more about this budget advisory group because the president is working with a bag 2.0, which is the second year of this. We're reworking. I'm the chancellor representative on this group. There'll be more things coming out. What are we going to do for tuition restrictions? What do we expect to see in terms of state revenue? What are the overall expectations? It's important to note that at a 1.8% tuition increase, that doesn't keep pace with inflation, which is probably about 2.3, 2.4% for us. Nationally, in higher education, it's 2.8%. So 1.8 is what we're, or in the state of Tennessee, it's 2.8. If you talk to our THEC budget people, nationally, the number is 1.8. And I think energy costs were the big difference. We're going for the lower number, 1.8. If our inflation is really 2.8%, there's an issue here. And we understand it. I've pointed it out. We don't want to put off tuition increases until there's a crisis and then have to have a huge increase. So we will come back with some recommendations, working with President Di Pietro, that will allow us to have a plan that we can all count on, kind of the rules of the game. And that's what that bag of recommendations will be. And compensation planning, the Board of Trustees does not want to see across-the-board salary increases. They want us to look at equity and market performance-based salary increases. And so having everyone well-trained on their, doing performance evaluations, evaluating staff is important. We have that. Things relate back to our strategic plan. I'm not going to read it to you, but I want to tell you that as we looked at allocations, we're trying to tie things to our strategic plan and the impact on students. The budget timeline, this just reviews, you know, we started August to December. We started a lot earlier this year. We still don't know for sure what we're going to have as a tuition increase. It doesn't come until the June meeting of the Board of Trustees. But I think we're pretty close to what we can count on. And you'll see here, this is a really good, healthy budget. We'll look at what is new revenue? What can we make investments with? But I think noting that this institution is the top-performing in the Complete College Tennessee Act performance-based indicator. So performance-based funding, we're leading the state. We're doing really well. We need to keep this up. We need to invest in our students, and that means investing in faculty. So right now, we're here at April with an open forum, and we will be glad to take questions. If you don't get a chance to ask your question today, email it to me. Email it to Dr. Brown. There's a budget page, budget chat. You can submit questions. Have a department head ask your question if you don't want to be identified. They ask questions on behalf of all of their faculty, and I will volunteer them, there are a number of you here, to serve in that role, too. So if you wonder about something, please ask. Don't let this go where you are wondering, what are they really doing here? Why did we leave this out? Transparency is what we're trying to have. We're not trying to hold back details. We are trying to tell you what we know right now and our best guess. The governor is committed to higher education. Our state legislature is. And what you'll see now from Dr. Brown, I think, reflects real investment in higher education in the state of Tennessee. So, Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Chancellor. Well, good afternoon to you, and thanks to all of you for coming today. Some other quick thank yous. I want to take a moment to thank Chancellor Engel for his leadership in promoting transparency of the budget process. So let's give him a round of applause. It's been a really, really good process for us. Also, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the provost, Dr. Ainsworth, for his many contributions to this process, and all of the members of our executive leadership team, all the deans who have been really heavily engaged in budget and financial planning here at the university, down to the department head level, too. We thank all of you. Also, a special thanks to Tyler Forrest and Chris Servison, the guys that really do kind of keep up with the numbers and check the nickels every day. So thanks to all of you, too, for a job well-done. Let's talk a little bit again. The chancellor said this is a good budget year, and it is a good budget year. We have very good support by the governor of the state, by recommendation from the Higher Education Commission, but more importantly, by the performance of this campus under the Complete College Tennessee Act. So I want to go over the revenue, the new proposed revenue. It always starts with how much money can you get into a budget? How we're spending our current budget? And then what is the proposed investment and allocation of new revenue that's coming into the university? So when you look at new revenue, you can see, we talked a little bit about the tuition increase of 1.8%. The HEPI rate generates about $1.3 million. We'd love for that to be more, but we're in a state where tuition increases are going to be challenging, I will tell you. And we project that over the next two to three years, you will see probably this level of tuition increases. Presents a challenge, though. If our costs go up, how do we fund the gap? And the chancellor is really on the bag committee to talk a little bit about that. We'll have about a 1.8% increase for expansion of PT and OT, those differential tuition appropriations. They're at about $361,000. But here's some good news. State appropriation, CCTA outcome productivity growth. This is our performance under CCTA. $1.2 million comes to this campus. Also, outcome productivity growth, $1.6 million additional revenue. Now herein lies the challenge. We're at the top of the heap now. How do we stay there? How do we keep investments that ensure that we stay at the top of this performance formula, which pretty much is funded based upon progression? Provost always talks about progression. How do students move from 30 to 60 to 90 hours and then on to graduation? How many baccalaureate degrees do we really produce here at the university? We're doing very well, but with the new decentralization of higher education with the THEC universities, what we call the focus, our locally governed university, every public university in the state now will be more competitive. And they will up their game to make sure that we're not number one. So I want to say to faculty and administration here, continue to do what you're doing to help move students along in this process. The state also, and the governor's also, funding the group insurance increase at about $573,000. If you recall, there've been years where you would get a raise, and then all of a sudden at mid-year, you'd have to pay for your own health insurance increase. Well, he's funded that this year, which is very, very good news. Small fees, there's some lab fee increases and expansion of about $102,000 there. But here's another good news piece of us, for us. Enrollment growth revenue for '16 and '17. We all wondered about the new free college for two-year colleges and universities, what impact that would have on us. Well, it appears that UTC has a good story, and students really want to come here for a four-year experience. So in the spring of that year, when they launched that program, more students came to UTC and took on more courses, more FTE, which generated over $900,000 of additional revenue for us. So we want to keep that value proposition out there, that we're a good value, a good choice, and a high-quality institution. We're going to also use some of our reserves. We have healthy reserves. I'll show you that a little bit later on. But we're going to use about $1.2 million of reserve, non-recurring revenue, to close some gaps when we talk about budgeting and planning. But here's something that I want you to take a look at right here. There was $12 million worth of aggregate request that came from all major reporting units across the university. And as one can see, only $8 million we managed to really aggregate up in revenue. So some tough decisions, tough strategic choices really had to be made by this executive team. I'm really proud of the way that they did this, that they had the dialogue to really invest in the top priority, top strategic priority, things across the institution. And for this new revenue, here's how we propose to spend those dollars. And here's a summary slide that tuition, again, will give you just about $1.2 million. State appropriation, again, about $4.2 million. Not a bad year for the state. Differential fees and enrollment growth, and again, reserves aggregating up to a little better than about $8 million of revenue. So let's talk about new expenses. How do we propose to invest these dollars, which is important? After this long process of a lot of planning, grassroots budgeting, here's what we have recommended for your consideration today. You can see that the majority of these funds, a big line item, goes to academic affairs to invest in academic quality continuing here at the universities. The real mission of universities, we teach at the end of the day. So you'll see a heavy investment there on the academic side of the house. Small investment in finance and operations and IT, similar across the board with student development, athletics, and communication and marketing. You will see a larger increase in institutional funding, which also includes the compensation raise pool. I'll talk a little bit more about that in that kind of investment. And of course, keeping our scholarships competitive is always an issue for us. You'll see some investment there. Now, this is interactive. If any of you have a burning question, you can kind of raise your hand. I'll answer it as I go, but when we finish, we really do want you to ask any questions that you may have. So when we look at the proposed '18 budget in terms of revenue, how is that budget aggregated up? How do we get money into this budget on what we call the education and general proposed budget year? Well, you can see that tuition and fees accounts right now for over 65% of the total ENG budget here at the university. Students really are important. They really do carry a bulk of the weight of financing public higher education in the state. State appropriations at $50 million, about 31%. We will say that about 20 years ago, that was an inversion of that. The state would have been putting in about 65 to 70%. Students would have been paying about 30. But now you can see over the last 20 years, this great inversion that we're relying heavily on tuition and fees. And the challenge there is that the state's now saying, keep those at a minimum. Keep those tuition and fees at a minimum. You see sales and services of about $5.1 million or 3%. Contracts at about $450,000. For an aggregate amount of about $162 million. People groan and complain about state appropriation, but I'm certainly not willing to give back that $50 million. So when you look across the SREB institutions, Tennessee still continues to invest pretty well in public higher education. We're hoping that they will invest even more. On the expense side, when we look at how we are spending our money right now, instruction will drive 43% of the investment here at about, almost $71 million. The core, again, of the mission of the institution is about instruction. You will also see student support services at about 15%. By the way, athletics is also kind of rolled up into that taxonomy. I don't want Dede to get real happy to say, you owe me more money. Some of that's athletic funding that's in there. Academic support at about 15%. At about $12.7 million. Operation and maintenance of the plant, 13%. At about $21 million. In those plant funds, though, are specialized funds and facility fees, not all ENG revenue there. And of course, scholarships at about $12.3 million are 8% of the budget. Public service, $2.6 million. And research at $2.3 million. All of these areas, we're looking at making investments to improve what we do in all of the taxonomies of this budget. So let's talk a little bit about what we're doing, what we have recommended. And this comes down to what the investment picture looks like for you. We'll start with the office of the chancellor of the university. By the way, I'd be remiss, too. I wanted to recognize Terry Denniston, our chief of staff, who happens to keep all of these vice chancellors in line and on time most of the time. Did a great job of helping us get this budget aligned. For the chancellor's office, new budget allocations there will be $49,000 of recurring revenue, $35,000 in nonrecurring, for a total of $84,000. The highlights there, they're looking at a community partnerships graduate assistance as we try to move the university further out into the community and help really define the Carnegie class here at the university. We're also looking at community partnerships operating budgets to do more of pushing the programs that you're doing out into the community. There's a Title IX e-verify training piece in that, and some Title IX operating funds that we feel that's critical to make sure that that program remains healthy and viable. One of the largest investments we will make this year, recommend to make, is on the academic affairs side of the house. The provost is in the back there, can field any questions, I'm sure. But on the recurring side, $2.7 million is recommended. Nonrecurring, $175,000 for a total of $2.9 million recommended for academic affairs, by far the largest investment that we make going forward. Again, we make that because our core mission is teaching at the end of the day, making sure that that whole operation remains strong and viable. I do want to say that the provost really did work with the deans to kind of hone in on this priority budget. So what you will have recommended here are 10 new faculty positions across academic affairs in education, in wellness, in nursing, in engineering, and in the library. 10 new faculty positions. Staffing and operating support for arts and sciences and enrollment management services. International education, the library, the graduate school, all staffing and operating reports, support. The provost indicated, and I will affirm, that we must also invest in operating support staff across the institution to really have a much more balanced operations here at the university. So he's making an effort to do that. Enhanced support for continuing education, you will see some investments made there and that, and we're going to be looking for some return on investment in continuing education. The provost has said, I'm going to make this investment short-term to really prime the pump, to get continuing education going on the campus, make it viable again, but also make it revenue generating again. Also, faculty promotions and UC Foundation rollovers in the salary pool. Every year, we will spend upwards of $250,000 to ensure faculty can be promoted here from assistant to associate to full professors on this campus, and those who are on soft money can roll to permanent funding. And it's been one of the, and by the way, at every level of that promotional process, there's a 10% salary increase that goes with that, which has really kept our faculty somewhat competitive in compensation. We're pleased to continue to do that. For athletics, athletics continues to do a really, really good job in fundraising and balancing their budget. I think I see Rob Robinson there, who really does a great job there. They're doing some really good things with ticket sales and also recruiting alternative sources of revenue. So what we're recommending there is in the area of compliance, $46,000 for a new compliance officer there in athletics to ensure that we don't get into NCAA violations. That is critical for that operation. For communications and marketing, a huge focus for us. We know that as we move forward, to improve our competitive positioning across the state of Tennessee, we must get our story out as often as we can in order to recruit students and make sure that we can actually recruit faculty and staff. So you will see some budget investments there. Recurring, $112,642, no nonrecurring. And what they're doing, this budget, is hiring a graphic designer and operating for undergraduate marketing and an advertising campaign. We've really not invested strongly in a strong marketing and advertising campaign here for communications and marketing, and we're pleased to make these investment recommendations because the story of this university has to be front and center. How many of you would agree on that? Everyone says we're the best-kept secret, but we're not going to be the best-kept secret anymore. We're going to make sure that we can get our story out there and get it told. FOIT, the budget that I manage in this area, you will see recurring of $250,000, nonrecurring $20,000 for a total of $270,000. The highlights here, we're looking at hiring an assistant director of arena operations position. Let me tell you why. All staff within the arena can retire today. I'm serious about that. There's really no succession planning for that operation. And as you know, that is an essential function for us across the institution. We only have one professional there, an Obi Webster, and if he got hit by the proverbial truck, the old Mack truck theory, we would have a problem. So this is our effort to really provide some succession planning there and continuation of operations. The police department needs equipment and maintenance and operating. It's an essential for the campus now, is trying to shore up that budget some in Rob Robinson area. And again, we talked about this last year, adding new police positions. We think we have a deficit of serval positions in public safety with the growth of this campus. We just got some comment from some of the faculty over in the state office building and the MAP building. Very large buildings. They feel isolated there. They said, hey, look, we need a security presence in those buildings. So we're recommending $100,000 there for security personnel to really have a high-visibility presence all across the campus to make you really feel safe and to make sure that the educational mission can go on. And of course, we always try to have incremental investments in custodial and a little bit of MNO operating for Tom Ellis as the campus have grown. We've taken on approximately 400,000 new square feet with the state office building and the MAP building in terms of growth. You've just got to add some MNO money to make sure that that stays healthy. Proposed budget for student development, some nonrecurring money, $100,000. The vice chancellor there said they need these funds for building improvements. This building is a high-traffic, high-use facility, and it can, the furnishings and all can become very dated very quickly. So we're going to try to use $100,000 to help Dr. Anderson to begin down the road of improving the furnishings and operations of this facility. The institutional budget is one of the larger ones. It's a recurring revenue of $4.1 million, nonrecurring of $450,000. The 3% compensation pool has been identified, and it is there for recommendation for allocation of that budget. It represents about $2.1 million of spend across the institution. We're adding some money for classroom furniture replacements. We've been trying to do that so we can standardize all the furnishings within classrooms. We'll talk a little bit about technology standardization as well, but we have found that not all faculty members who teach in these classrooms have great chairs and great podiums and great desks and all of those things to really facilitate teaching. So we're going to add some classroom replacement funds there. Technology refresh, there are some infrastructure renewal requirements there. We've got some funding recommended for that. Utilities for additional square footage. With the MAP building now fully ours and the state office building, again, almost 400,000 new square feet, we're estimating that the facility's recurring cost is about 2.7, I mean, about 270,000. two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars for those particular buildings. And of course, we've got some energy conservation measures at the state office building that we'd like to put in place with some non-recurring funds and goes back to, we're part of a system, folks. So we've got a system charge at about a hundred-thousand dollars, a little north of that this year, and a little bit of money for the UT Research Foundation, about nine-hundred bucks, not a lot. And of course, you'll see some scholarship funds in there as well. Here it is, proposed scholarships as we move forward, recurring two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars there, non-recurring four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, for a total investment of six-hundred-ninety-five-thousand dollars to keep our scholarships competitive. And that's important when you look at enrollment goals, to keep those scholarship funds competitive. This includes federal work-study match adjustments, the gold scholarships. We're doing a non-recurring funds phase out of that program now that we've implemented our regional tuition outreach. Then there are institutional scholarships and grant and aid adjustments for athletics and such. When we do the one-point-eight percent HEPI tuition increase, we've got to add that to the scholarships as well and our grant and aid funding. Hope you're not glazed over yet. Kind of move for me so I know you're not asleep. Thank you, all right. All right, there's some fees that will go forward. Some of the fees must be approved by the board. We don't have any board-related fees to be approved. Some are approved by President Di Pietro and some by Chancellor Engel. I'll quickly go through those real quick. There's some lab fee adjustments of about a hundred-and-two-thousand dollars in education that extends to new courses. Art, to increase theirs from twenty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars per course to fund increased cost of supplies, aggregates up about a hundred-and-two-thousand dollars, and we will present that, the chancellor will, to President Di Pietro for approval. The chancellor will also have on his desk fees to approve. These are local fees, again, the parking student decals, one-point-eight percent at the HEPI rate, the decals for other types, that's faculty and staff, one-point-eight percent. All of these fees were a three-year rolling average to fund the new six-hundred-and-fifty-car parking garage that will come online in eighteen. And of course, meal plans, the chancellor will talk to you about that. Per the contract with Airmark, that was a four percent escalator in the meal plans, generates about forty-six thousand dollars, a total of about seventy-two-thousand-seven-forty-five. Let's talk a little bit about tuition and fees right now in terms of where we stand right now. UT Chattanooga really continues to be about in the middle of the pack with the state peers when you look at tuition and fee revenue. But I want you to look at total mandatory fees right now, which is also accounted in the one-point-eight percent HEPI rate. So when you increase these mandatory fees, it is calculated in your total fee calculation. So we have to be real careful with that. We're at about one-point-seven million dollars right now. Undergraduate maintenance fees at about six-thousand-seven-sixty-eight, and undergraduate residence fees at about eight-thousand-five-forty-four. Currently in seventeen, there is some electricity in our fee structure, meaning that we've got some growth there. We could raise tuition fees a little bit to be competitive within the state, and that's something that the chancellor will talk to you a little bit about, our fifteen-and-four model. There's some opportunity that we can do here at the university, and we'll talk a little bit about that going forward. Again, I wanted you to have a good look at mandatory fees that we have right now. By the way, you don't have to take copious notes. This entire slide deck is going to be posted on the website as soon as we get out of here on the business and financial affairs and the Uprac websites. You can get this entire slide deck for transparency. Student activity fees, nothing proposed in eighteen, two-hundred-and-forty dollars. There's a debt service fee that pays the debt on all of the building improvements here at the UC and the ARC and those kinds of projects that are actually funded by students. Health services fee at a hundred-and-twenty dollars, athletics fee at four-hundred-and-eighty dollars. You may say, "Wow, what happened there?" Well, years ago, this campus, under the direction of T HAC, went to a model that said that part of athletics needed to be supported by student fees, and that's what happened. It's been about, Robbie, I think about almost nine, ten years ago. Haven't had any increases since then, but that's what happened in that transition. There's a green fee there, technology fee, which is very integral to the campus, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The library fee is Dean Littcan. There she is. I know she'd want a little more, but about fifty dollars generates a little better, almost seven-hundred-thousand dollars for library improvement. And again, she'll tell you that's not enough for right now because that's one of our high-traffic, high-use amenities here on the campus. Transportation fee at ninety-six dollars. That also helps fund the new parking deck that's going in. Facilities fee, every time you see Tom Ellis dug up something on campus, much of that's coming out of that facilities fee as well as that beautiful courtyard you saw out there at Chamberlain Plaza, and he'll engage two streets, Vine Street and Oak Street, and about two-million dollars worth of capital improvements that will come from this facilities fee as well. An international fee of twenty dollars, we were glad to move that forward. As we look at globalization of our curriculum, of our campus, we were lacking in any kind of international fee and investment. We were glad to put that forward for DeKeo Suzuki to begin that process. So the chancellor talked a little bit about undergraduate tuition and fees, and as you can see, from 2014 to proposed 2018, very gradual increases. We've not had any double-digit increases on this campus in tuition, I know, in the last twelve years or so. But take a look at the out-of-state tuition at over twenty-four-thousand dollars. If you're going to be in a competitive market space in the state of Tennessee, that's much too high. And states all around us are beginning to lower their out-of-state tuition for competitiveness. So under the chancellor's leadership and the executive team, we're going to engage a conversation to say, "What should that be?", and talk to the Higher Education Commission about lowering the out-of-state undergraduate tuition for this campus. We'll take a look at graduate tuition and fees, a similar story. Over twenty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty dollars. One still cannot be competitive without a state tuition that high at the graduate level when other universities, other states are lowering their competitive benchmarks on these kinds of fees. So we're going to be talking a little bit about how do we lower those fees, what's the sweet spot? Do we do it for states that touch the border of Tennessee? Is it a radius that we want to look at? All of these conversations we will hold later on this year with the members of the Higher Education Commission, and the chancellor will be talking to the bag committee about our approach to tuition and fees. Here's a telling slide, though, and I want you to take a real look at that. Look at 2007 and 2008. There you can see on this slide that state appropriations match student tuition investment. But since 2009, all the way up to 2018, tuition has moved in this direction. State appropriation stays here. There's a huge gap there in terms of funding support. How does one cover that gap and continue to increase enrollment and meet the goals of the state in terms of drive to fifty-five? How do we do that with that kind of tuition gap? And what we're saying to state government, please continue to fund public higher education. If tuition is going to be low, we're going to ask for more state investment. Does that make sense? Let me see the hands, folks, does that make sense? Trying to keep you moving, too, so you don't go to sleep on me. And of course, I want to talk a little bit about compensation. We accomplish the work of this university through talented faculty and staff who really care a lot about this place, and we're thankful for what all you do every day. Here's a slide that kind of aggregates up our investment and compensation since 2013 all the way up to what's recommended in eighteen. You can see we've done pretty well with a total of about eleven-point-nine million, almost twelve million dollars that we put in compensation on this campus. Across the board has been about six-point-four million dollars of that, about fifty-four percent. But the board is now moving us away from across-the-board investments, and they want to really make us take a look at merit, market, and performance-based compensation planning. So we're taking a really hard look at those particular models. The other good news about the across-the-board increase is those faculty and staff who were the least of us, who had the lowest salaries, we always had an escalator in there for them, a minimum payment that tried to move their salary up and keep them competitive. So we're glad to do that. Market and merit compensation, about four million dollars, and again, about one-point-three million, twelve percent in faculty promotions and UC Foundation rollover funding, permanent-based And just a quick, I won't bore you with this, we do track our bag update investments. I want you to know that this campus was pretty much premier in terms of how we dealt with this whole bag initiative. We got out in front. Recall that we angst a lot over reinvestment in the budget. We cut the base budget about four-point-seven percent, and we took those funds and actually reinvested those funds back into the institution strategically. Still a small bit of those funds that are left. We also put in a voluntary retirement incentive program that generated about six-point-five million dollars of flexibility. Some of those positions were put back, many of them were not put back the way they really came out of the organization. So it was a great opportunity to reinvest in the university. And of course, we also had internal reallocations of compensation, program realignments, we tracked that for you, tuition, all the new tuition that came in, for a total of about almost eighteen million dollars worth of funds that we have actually reviewed, looked at, and reinvested on this campus. One of the leading campuses at UT. During the last UT Board of Trustees meeting, our chancellor was really celebrated for his work there in terms of saying, "He gets it at the end of the day of reducing for reinvestment to strategic priorities." And we were glad to hear that, right, chancellor? So I want you to, this is just an indicator of institutional health, the E and G fund balance. The T HAC requires a minimum of two percent of revenue to be set aside in a reserve in case something catastrophic happens on the campus, right? Our fund balance sits at four-point-three-eight percent. Over six-point-three million dollars, I'm proud of that, so of something that we needed to really invest in if we had a catastrophe, we do have the funding in place to deal with that. I always like to add as a benchmark, when I first became the financial guy here, that fund balance sat at about six-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars. I was literally scared to death, far too little. So we've worked every year to increase our fund balance, as you can see the growth there, that the institution is healthy, financially is strong. And of course, notes and bonds payable, this is another Saks accreditation key indicator how bonded, how leveraged is the institution. I'm pleased to say that we only have forty-eight million dollars worth of bondable debt that's out there, and there are permanent revenue streams to cover all of that bonded debt, right? We're going to add, though, seventy-seven million in 2018. Thanks, Tyler, all right, for new housing and a new parking garage. But what we can say is that there's a dedicated revenue stream to cover that bonded debt, and we're very, very pleased with that. We've been very frugal about not leveraging the institution in terms of capital investments. And of course, square footage, this is an indicator, I want you to see that since 2013, our square footage across the campus continues to go up. We have three-point-one million square feet of space on the campus, which is an indicator of growth, but also the budget has to respond to that square footage growth. And this is always a good indicator, residence hall occupancy rates. In order to pay the debt on those residence hall, occupancy is the key driver. I see Harriet back there. Where's Harriet? Raise your hand. There's, I'll get a confirmation, right, Harriet? She says yes. So the occupancy rates in our residence hall is central, really, to the performance of our being able to pay the bonded debt on those residence halls. So we're in very good shape now. Our occupancy was pretty much at a hundred percent. We slipped a little bit. In the spring, we always do, but the chancellor has a great task force now on board looking at housing and how we can keep that occupancy rate up and we can keep our housing competitive. The other challenge is that there are competitors in the market space now. You look across the street, that big thing called Douglas Heights, and you look all around you, people are building student housing. So we've got to make sure our housing stays very, very competitive to ensure that our occupancy stays up, and our students have a good experience when they engage in university housing. And the provost will tell you, too, that when housing is good, right, progression is good. Progression also is very, very good. Here's a great slide that I really want you to know. I always like to brag on this slide. Brian Roland, the CEO and our vice chancellor for development is here today, and Brian, this is a very good sign. The end of the day, our endowment value, the value of the endowment of the UC Foundation right now sits at a hundred-and-twenty-four-point-eight million dollars. Even have about twelve-point-eight million dollars of short-term funds that they can call upon at the end of the day. So they're going to make some huge disbursements for this campus. One-point-eight million dollars from the main endowment for academic programs. You will see them fund about one-point-three million dollars. Professorships and scholarships, about one-point-two million, even twenty-six thousand for faculty development. Over five-point-one million dollars of value that the UC Foundation brings to our campus. For a campus the size of UTC, it sets us apart in the nation in terms of our competitiveness. Having a foundation to be able to really do that for us, I always like to say it's the true margin of excellence for this campus. So let's give the foundation a round of applause. I wish some of them were here. But what a great thing that we have here with the foundation. So that's all I have. You can wake up now. I know some folks say, "This guy likes that stuff," but I kind of glazed over when we started talking about all these numbers. I get real excited about that, especially when we've got a really, really good budget, I think, going forward this year, and we've had a really, really good process, a good engaging process. So there are the microphones there, and I think some folks will bring it to you if you don't want to walk down to it. Kind of tell us your name, too. I know your face.
Hey, I'm Jonathan McNair, the Holbrook Professor of American Music. I was happy to see an increase in the marketing budget for the university, for our campus, and I'm curious about what the overall marketing budget is because I think many of us know that that has been really lacking for a long time, and I'm happy to hear that you all are moving to try to tell our story better. Could you tell us kind of what that overall budget is and kind of how that compares percentage-wise with other campuses?
Aggregatively, it sets at about one million dollars right now, right? We will add these funds, and even with the addition of these funds, as Bart Simpson says, "We ain't there yet." At the end of the day, we need more investment. There needs to be investment in development of our website, making sure that it is premier, and by the way, usable, right? So you're going to see us talk about that as we move forward. I think you'll see the chancellor continue to push that. We've hired new talent there for that. George Hudson is here now, who brings some very innovative ideas to thinking about marketing strategies. There's a consulting firm we've engaged to kind of help us frame that, but we're excited about that going forward. I look forward to the day where, in every publication regionally, something about our faculty and about our great academic programs are out there, and I think we're going to need that. Other public universities are going to be doing the same thing, and we will track that, but thank you for your support there.
I think benchmarking against other institutions is a good idea, and so we do that in other areas. We ought to do it in communications and marketing, too. So that's something we can get.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question.
This is Charlie Remy from the library. I've got three questions, just following up on some of the stuff you mentioned. My first is, could you just kind of explain the four percent increase for Airmark?
Yeah.
And, you know, is that in the contract to happen every year, or is it, you know, kind of every few years? It just seems a little high.
Yeah, and I guess it is in the current contract right now. We're renegotiating a contract with Airmark right now, and what we're saying to them is that we're not going to allow you any increases beyond what we're allowed. It's going to be held to one-point-eight, too, as we move forward, but this was in their original contract. They always have an escalation clause in there.
Okay.
And that's what they'd use to reinvest in pods and all kinds of new improvements across the campus.
Could you also explain the technology refresh? I mean, is that computer labs? Is that individual workstations? Is that, you know, network bandwidth?
It's a combination of all of the above at the end of the day. Much of what we have in non-recurring Much of what we have in nonrecurring funds, though, are the network refresh technology support. We already have the computer refresh funded. In fact, those machines, right, Tom and Ron, should be landing on your desk at any day now, at the end of the day. This is our continuing investment to keep the network up and running and strong and increase our bandwidth and capacity so we can work.
And how often will those workstations be refreshed?
We're looking at, Tom Hoover says about a four-year refresh cycle, but we're going to monitor that, too, and get the feedback to see how that works.
My last question was just about the employee salary increases. So, I know it was mentioned by both you and the Chancellor, but can you just explain the going away from across the board and when that process will be implemented and how?
Well, we think it's going to be implemented beginning July 1 of this year, and we have HR working on a process and a methodology in terms of how we do that. We're going to share that with the executive leadership team and get their input from it. But from some of the recommendations from the Board of Trustees, they would love to see us move to a performance-based compensation model, right? But we also know there's a need to take a look at market competitiveness of salaries as well. Whether or not there's compression in certain divisions or certain salaries, we have to take a look at that as well. So, it's a comprehensive comp plan that will look at merit, but it'll also look at market, right, and the competitiveness of position. So, all three of those move in parts. That's kind of what we're hoping the methodology will look like. Did I answer that?
Yeah, and so is our across-the-board increases definitely going away? Is that a difference?
I think for right now, for this year, I don't think you're going to see any. Our direction right now for this year is no across-the-board. At the end of the day, they want to make sure that, again, we do deal with compression and market issues, we can do that, but some feel like that other people work harder than others, and some people are working high up here and they should be evaluated and compensated for that. That's what performance-based compensation is all about. Did I answer that okay?
I was going to ask you that, the performance is very subjective. The performance is for staff, especially, are very subjective, and it's not really, you know, the number game is really, really odd in how you, how different units are actually coming up with those numbers. It's strange, or how are you going to take that into consideration, at least in this year? Because nothing was told us during the evaluation process. I mean, we tried to do a good job, but if I do a really, really good job, then somebody else is doing everybody well because you're only going to get merit based on the score. I mean, if you have a score, it's not really fair to make that up.
So, let me tell you what the conversation has been with the executive leadership team. We've asked all Vice Chancellors to take an honest and fresh look at how we do evaluations. Notice that we went to a quantitative instrument. You can get quantitative numbers there, but if people are gaming the system, it makes no sense. So, we're asking people to really take a good look, a fresh look, and an honest look at how we do evaluations. We're also asking Lori Pugh and HR to really begin a training program for managers on how to do strong performance evaluations. How to do strong performance evaluations, you're going to see us roll out some of that this year as well. We understand where you're coming from there. The HROs are meeting in Knoxville today and tomorrow. That's at the top of the agenda, even on all campuses.
For this year, you're right, we haven't done this.
Right.
We can look at proactively for next year, trying to normalize scores so that I don't think, if you're doing your job every day, doing well, you get a 15, and somebody else says that's a 20, and then we differentiate in between there, it's just like grading for an instructor. If your average grade is a C versus a B, so we are going to have to work with the numbers we have within units where individual supervisors are reviewing faculty and there's a distribution. We're going to have to have some way to help normalize that, and that's what HR is working on.
I think you could see anonymized data, you know, across campus, so you can just see, like, where your staff fall in this broad spectrum of scores. I don't know, you have no clue when I'm evaluating my staff and where they fall. And secondly, when you're talking like a management panel can test, there's already a five in the salary, so, you know, it's not an easy sell to go to somebody and say, oh, well, now we're moving, you know, getting rid of across the board. Some staff are lowest paid people on our campus. So, you know, we want to also be cognizant, and I guess there's market increases and all that, but especially for this year, when we haven't had any discussions, even if you had the supervisor level about this, and we don't know where our people fit across campus and the score, I think that is really important, that it falls down to that.
Have we ever produced anonymized data like that?
I think we can, though. HR has the data, I mean, we can produce it for sure.
That's all.
No, no, great question, and right on target. I see someone getting up to go. Yes.
So, up to 3%?
Yes.
Has there been a determination made yet on what percentage will go towards that merit and what equity and other percentage towards merit?
Not yet. Lori is looking at that. We've got a consulting firm helping her with that, and we should have some numbers probably within the next two weeks for the Chancellor and executive leadership team again to look Any other questions? Folks, you're a great bunch. Oh, there's one, there's one. Dr. O'Leary, I did not escape Brian O'Leary.
Well, I'm just wondering, we're having some problems with competitiveness at the graduate level. The level of funding for graduate assistantships doesn't seem to be keeping pace with others. And you looked at what it costs us out of state, and many of our students are from out of state, and we're just, we need some help.
Okay.
So...
I'll make that note, Mr. Provost, did you hear that? Okay? Noted. Gerald's nodding, I'm sure I'll hear that again. He's nodding. All right, thank you, Brian, we get it, we do. Well, folks, listen, thank you. Please email the Chancellor myself, Dr. Ainsworth, if you have any feedback, comments. Go to the website and pull this slide deck up, take it apart, send us your feedback. We really appreciate. Thanks for all you do for the university. Thank you.